This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. We need to amend the agenda at G5 discussion item for changing of the board meeting nights. Having amended that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Kalen, second by Dare and all those in favor. That passes seven to zero. You will join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. First by Troy, second by Rick. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Moving right along to recognition, Dr. Bullemore.
If it pleases the board, we would like to recognize the December Classified Employee of the Month. Excelsior Springs School District is pleased to recognize Ms. Amber Minot for her dedication to the staff and families of Cornerstone Elementary. Amber is always so patient and kind to kids, families, and staff when dealing with daily pressures. Cornerstone has had numerous parents and families share what a great person and asset to the building she is by always putting kids first. Great job, Amber. Amber was nominated by Mr. Ryan Sloan and Mrs. Jessica Broadbent. The Classified Employee of the District Award is sponsored by the Excelsior Springs Hospital, and the hospital proudly supports the students and staff of the Excelsior Springs School District. So I went over late last week and presented that to Amber, and she just wanted me to let you guys know she was very thankful for the appreciation, especially with all the craziness going on at the schools with the sickness. So she was very happy and proud to get that. So I wanted to pass that along.
All right, next up is the boys state soccer. I don't see Mr. Grime in the room.
If it pleases the board, Mr. Grime wasn't going to make it tonight, so I'll introduce Coach Ganzer if he wants to come forward. So Coach Ganzer's and his coaching staff soccer team took third place in state this year. So we're very excited to recognize him and his team tonight.
I assure you the back of their heads are just as pretty as the front. Yeah, I mean, what a group. First of all, thank you guys for taking the time and recognizing this fine group of gentlemen. Obviously, several are not here. But we first have to thank Coach Grime and Coach Siegel for all that they do. I know that they're very busy throughout the year, but they made us have a really smooth season, and we're very thankful for that. On top of that, we rode to state in style, and a huge thanks goes to Remax and all the Realtors over there, Manley Home Team, Simmons, Melinda Humphrey, Ken McAlwee, Randall LaFaye, that whole group. We'd like to thank the Quarterback Club and then obviously the Greg Williams Foundation as well. They ponied up and sponsored us in a big, big way. And that experience is one that I know I won't soon forget, and I know these boys won't either. This group is just a fantastic group of individuals. You know, there's countless times where teachers, community members, whoever, you name it, will come by and share a quick story about just the quality of individuals that these guys are. So I say that, you know, on the field, they're very high-character kids that work really hard and do everything they can to put us in a good situation, but off the field, maybe even more so. So these are the kind of groups that you hope and you wish that are successful, and to do the things that they've done, not only this year but last year as well, puts them in a really small set of people that have gone through our district. So we're very grateful to have these guys. You know, I shared a story at the banquet, and I'll just share it again, and I think that, you know, obviously, we had a good start, good foundation when I took over nine years ago from Coach Bullemore. Maybe you guys might know him. But we had a good start, and, you know, but I think the biggest thing that we focus on every day is getting 1% better. And there's a story in Atomic Habits by James Clear. He talks about the British Cycling Team, and he talks about how when he took over in 2003, they started focusing on getting better 1% every day. They even go as far as to make sure that there's not a speck of dust in their traveling trailer. We don't go that far. There would be dust in our closets. But the group of individuals here, every day of training, puts in an immense amount of work. I would put our group up against the best of the best as far as their intensity in practice. And in 2003, David Brailsford takes over British Cycling, and they've won one gold medal in 100 years. It takes them five years, but in 2007 to 2017, they win 178 gold medals. They win 66 gold Paralympic medals, and they win five Tour de Frances. Having never done that before, obviously, they achieved immense results, and that's what this group does on a day-to-day basis. You know, nine years ago, the groups before them obviously set the tone for where they're at now, but they pass the torch year to year, and these guys get to reap all the benefits having put that work in themselves. So I can't say enough good things about the Tiger Soccer Program, these guys for continuing that progress, and for the next group that's about to take over after these guys leave us. So thank you guys for the legacy that you left, and thank you guys to the board for recognizing these fine group of young men. Thank you. What'd you say?
Good job, boys.
Don't leave, there's a nice video.
We'll expect to do this again next year, right?
Bigger trophy, more hard rock.
Thanks, Coach.
All right. All right, next up is the MSBA Delegate Report.
December edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. School safety was the theme of the first general session. During that session, MSBA's Executive Director Melissa Randall made a major announcement regarding funding to support school district needs for emergency operations planning and development.
The Department of Public Safety is providing funding for all school districts throughout the state of Missouri to receive for free the application for emergency operation planning that many of you have been using that MSBA developed a few years ago. And so that application, that online tool, along with the training and the support, will now be available to all school districts for free.
MSBA Center for Education Safety is offering free webinars, so your school district can find out how to take advantage of this great resource and get trained on the implementation, numerous features, and use of your emergency operations planning tools. Visit the MSBA website for more information on webinar registration. Missouri's 2023 Teacher of the Year, Christina Andrade-Melli, spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. The evening was dubbed "A Night of Champions," and she stressed the importance of being a champion for public schools.
We have done things in education in the last three years that we could never have imagined. The extraordinary has become ordinary because it's what we needed to do for our students and our communities. But I'd encourage you to reach out to the people who did that work, colleagues on your board, your staff, your families, your communities. Thank them, recognize them, and then go out and tell somebody else about it. If we are not telling the stories of public education, of the struggles and the triumphs, somebody else is going to tell our story for us.
Conference General Session keynote speakers included school safety experts Michelle Gay, John McDonald, and Frank DeAngelis, former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard A. Harris, and one of the greatest Olympic track and field athletes of all time, Jackie Joyner-Kersee. The conference featured more than 90 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, and MSBA's student showcase of public school programs. MSBA's Delegate Assembly met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. Speaking of advocacy, the 2023 regular session of the Missouri General Assembly convenes on January 4th. MSBA will keep you informed on developments during the legislative session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, critical issue alerts, and immediate updates. Information on legislative issues can also be found on MSBA's Action Center website, and mark your calendar now for MSBA's Legislative Forum to be held in Jefferson City on March 28th. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed. We leave you this month with words of inspiration from Olympic champion Jackie Joyner-Kersee on the power school board members have by being champions for children.
The greater we are, the more challenges we will face, because everyone loves to lift you up, but they really be trying to find a way to tear you down. So the work is never done. So continue on that journey, continue to work hard, continue to meet those challenges. No matter how challenging it is, none of you are giving up on education, giving up on our young people. So you give them the hope, you give them the guidance, you give them the light, because a lot of our students are in dim lights and don't believe that it's possible. But you give them the hope that the impossible is probable. So keep doing what you're doing and shining that light.
Did you see that little Excelsior Springs representation in the video?
Rewind.
Now, for this month, I want to start off with an update on our financial status. So one of the things that started reporting to you was kind of our previous couple of years and month-over-month spending and what our balances currently are, and something we wanted to track really closely this year. One of the things we asked all of our directors and principals was try to slow down a little bit on our spending. We were running a little hot. If you can see here, we're starting to flatten out that expenditure slope just a little bit. I still anticipate that to drop quite a bit because we're making payroll and don't have any revenues this month, but we're hoping to come in a little bit closer to that bottom peak of that yellow line from last year is what we're aiming for. And then we'll really have a better understanding where we are financially once we get our revenues in January. That's why you see the uptick every year during that month. So once we have a better idea of what our revenues come in at, we'll have a better understanding of where we're at budget-wise, and we'll probably bring some budget amendments to you. But I don't really want to do that now because we're just kind of waiting to see what that's going to look like. So that's kind of the premise of that. Do you have any questions over the finances on that piece of it? Kind of gives you a good idea, though, year over year, kind of where we stand and what we spend each month. On the next slide, it talks a little about attendance. Attendance is one of the big topics we're prioritizing, both in our cabinet but also in our buildings, and wanted to take a look currently at our, just our strict, straight attendance. This doesn't measure the 90/90 that a lot of people talk about and discuss, where 90% of the students are here 90% of the time. Those, that data is not very strong for us. So this is actually as positive as it gets. If you take a look, everywhere from 88% up to over 92%, which seems good on the surface, but when we dig deeper into this, we're seeing that more and more of our students aren't here 90% of the time, and that's very difficult for us to have student achievement if we don't have students in school. So it's going to be one of our biggest priorities moving forward is how do we improve upon this? And we have a number of strategies that we're working on to put in place. There'll be more on that to be heard later. Any questions on the attendance pieces? The next piece I want to introduce is that this is something that we've been working on this entire school year, and Dr. Miller has really put a lot of work into this, Dr. Bullemore put a lot of work into this, talking about bringing back career ladder. So the state legislature approved paying 60% of career ladder expenses for teachers, and just wanted to give you a quick update of what we're trying to move forward with and kind of introduce it here at this meeting, and we're going to bring back more specifics to be approved moving forward after the first of the year. What this is going to mean is a first-year teacher would be, or a stage-one teacher would be eligible up to $1,500 in additional salary, a stage-three teacher up to $5,000 more. That is offset by some state revenues that are becoming in, but at the same time, there's going to be an expenditure for the district too. So one of the ways we're going to try to promote this program and instill this for next school year is to change around how we're handling our stipends and actually fold that into more career ladder. So actually, it'll give people that are in that stage three even more opportunities to make more money and yet still accomplish all of the goals they've already been handling so far. So that's kind of how that's set up. I know a lot of people who are familiar with career ladder in the past have an idea of how this works, but maybe not everyone. So if you have any questions about this, it's something really the state is pushing. It's a great opportunity for us to re-implement it, help compensate our staff, but also take advantage of the money that's coming in from the state.
I think it's great because it kind of levels out on stipends and extra duty. It's just, it's an hours responsibility level thing. Makes it a lot simpler. Everybody knows what's going on. I'm glad that you're looking at that.
Yeah, really, it's a, it's a lot of work in the background to make it work, but the good thing about it is it really forces people to actually have a plan, and they have to get their plan approved ahead of time to be eligible for this. So it gives the principals and the buildings the opportunity to make sure that they're getting the coverage they need for students, either before and after-school needs, as well as different clubs and programs. So we're really excited about that.
So your cost of 1.25 is if every teacher in the district participated?
That is if all of the eligible teachers in the district participated, yes.
And what do they have to do to be eligible?
It depends for the different stages. It's how many years of experience that they have. So, and then if they transfer from one district to another, they can come in, but I don't believe they come into the same stage. Do they start over again? They come to the same stage, or they come from another district? Which is advantageous for us because when we try to recruit teachers, then they're not having to lose or give up something.
In the past, they had to have a minimum number of hours of, like, student contact. They still have that. So that would still, and I think that would be huge too, especially to help with student achievement.
And that's with the different stages, even on the graph there. So a stage one, let's say you're a second-year teacher, 30 hours, you're getting $1,500, and you have to have that documented and prepared and approved before you actually begin that.
And we actually set what is offered, so we have some control on it, so we can make sure everything aligns to our PD and kind of what we're doing. But the majority of it has to be linked directly to student time, which is great. I know back when I first started, there were a ton of student groups that would meet after school, so I look forward to seeing a lot of that return for kids.
Is that yearly, right?
Correct, annually, yes. Next slide, I wanted to talk, I'm not going to steal all the thunder of the Career Center grants, but I just wanted to keep all this front and center. I'm going to keep this in my slide each and every month as we progress through the process, but just wanted to get those pictures out there again about what this would look like if we're able to have this approved. So it would require a vote from the board, but what we'd receive is grant money that would pay for a couple of classrooms, two new programs with the Career Center, and also a new facility for our high school and our Career Center to use. The next slide, I want to continue to talk about Proposition Lewis. That's, we're driving ahead to having this on the ballot in April. I know Lisa took that to the counties, and actually, it's going to be on the ballot. So we have all the ballot language, we have all that submitted, so everything's going to move forward. Got a couple of new pictures here from the architects, so I just want to show what the renderings look like, what the proposed site location and build-out would look like. If you have any questions about how that's moving forward, we actually have a meeting with the city of Excelsior Springs this Friday to talk about the design and building, the impact it has with the city. So we're working with them closely this week, and we're really excited about moving forward with our plan. So we really have a strong architect and construction manager on board, so we'll look forward to that. The biggest thing on the next slide, and this is what I would try to emphasize to everyone, what we're asking in April is to simply take 70 cents out of our savings account and put that same 70 cents in our checking account. We're not increasing the overall tax rate. We're increasing Fund I tax rates, but we're decreasing Fund III tax rates, so it's an absolute neutral tax rate change. And that's going to be a really important thing to communicate to the community, to understand that, yes, this one's going up, but this one's going down, so it's actually going to be a net zero. But that will allow us to spend the money in a way that allows us to build a brand-new Lewis Elementary and replace it. So it's really an important thing we need to be able to communicate to our community. A couple of dates on here I put for everyone, just from Proposition Lewis, kind of gives you an idea of some of the design work that's going in ahead of time. One of the difficulties, if we just sit and wait until after, then we're behind the eight ball, and it puts us out almost two years. If we do a little bit of pre-work before the vote, anticipating a positive outcome, it might save us some time where we get kids back into the brand-new building sooner, and I think we can all agree that's exactly what we're trying to do. So yes, there is some work that's going on now, but we think it's going to be paid off in the long run because it's more advantageous for our kids. Again, a couple of new pictures of some of the build-outs. I just, I think it's fun to see kind of what it could look like, and there's a lot of similarities with the same build, but a lot of different finishes. There's different theme in this building. The other one had a lot of hexagons. This one's a lot more circles, different color schemes. It's more of a sun and a moon theme, so they have a lot of sun and moon, like facs and wall murals they're going to put on there. So that's what you kind of see under the stairs there, is facs about the sun and the moon cycles and things like that, which is kind of fun, colorful. I don't know how people think of that stuff. They're very creative. And that's all I have for my report for this month, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions? Nope. All right. Moving on to discussion items, first up is, oh, Mr. Ruby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Ruby, and I'm the director at the Excelsior Springs Area Career Center. And so I wanted to share some updated information about our grants and talk about a, kind of like a, right now, kind of a base timeline for our Career Center expansion projects. So a couple of weeks ago, Governor Parsons made an announcement about the awards for the Missouri Area Career Center Opportunity Grant. These were all funded through ARPA funds, and during that announcement, it was made public that Excelsior Springs Area Career Center will receive $400,000. This is a great, that is a 75-25 matching grant, and we got the max amount allowed possible, so that was pretty awesome. And those funds can be used for the design, renovation, construction, and school improvements. And this is kind of the second grant that's been awarded to the Career Center. As you guys might remember, in October, we were awarded a little over $546,000. The funds for these two grants will allow us to renovate current structures, build a new performance center, and expand program offerings at the Career Center. These projects will begin in the spring of 2023 with a projected completion of August 2024. But as Dr. Thomason just said, those are all just kind of projections. We're kind of at the mercy of how quickly we can get things rolling and supply chains and all that fun stuff. So right now, it's, things are kind of moving slowly, but ideally, we'll have all these things completed by August of 2024. The funding for these two projects will come in two phases. The first is from that original grant that we got, the House Bill 3002 grant. So the plan is to submit that to the state in April, and we'll get back a little over $546,000. And that would happen, and that will happen in April. The next step would be the MoARPA funds up there from the Make-O-Grant MoARPA funds, and we would submit the second, $1.1 million, and then we would receive back from the state $400,000. So if we're looking at project totals there, you're looking at 2.2 total million dollars. The district will put up 1.25 million of that, and then the district will get back nine, or will put up all of it, but the district will get back 900, around 950,000. So it'll be out about 1.25 million. And that's, again, a lot of good things are going to be done with that. As stated before, the renovation of the current weight room will allow us to expand by two programs. After looking at multiple data points, including workforce development data, the two programs I'm going to recommend are physical therapy, sports medicine, and law enforcement. Both of these programs will add to already popular health services and support services programs. Those are our two, right now, our CNA program and our FIRE EMT programs are by far and away our most popular programs, are the most difficult ones to get into, and we have, that's the one we always have kids waiting on a list. So being able to get two new programs that will also be in that same cluster, career cluster is what they call them, that will definitely help our kids out. These programs will also allow us to partner with local institutions and municipalities to provide our students with a well-rounded program experience. Each program will allow students to earn industry-recognized credentials and college credit during the completion of these programs. And just a reminder, an industry-recognized credential is something that kids can take. It's kind of like a test, an assessment they give, so that kind of like lets them know that they have the skill and the competency to enter that workforce with, into that industry and be able to smoothly, seamlessly start into that industry. So a couple of quick timelines for you guys. First up, January 2023, we're going to do our, submit our program approval for the sports medicine and physical therapy class. In March, we're going to complete the planning and begin the construction and renovation of the projects that were listed above. We will want to submit, we want to get those started so that we can submit for our first reimbursement for the House Bill 3002 grant funds. And then in May, the idea, ideally, would post in our, for our physical therapy, sports medicine position, to hire the instructor for that course. The benefit of doing that would be that, that way, the instructor would have, get that instructor hired, they would have the entire year to help build the program, recruit, make sure we have partnerships that we want with local hospitals, different medical organizations, and get, really have a sound program to get put in place. Jump forward to February 2024. You've heard Mark come talk to you guys in the ears of pass about for enhancement grants, so that's when we would do that for our physical therapy class. That would be the first one to get implemented. Then in April of 2024, we'd submit our second reimbursement for the, for the MoARPA funds. August 2024 is physical therapy and the sports therapy program would start, and then we would kind of start that same process all over again with our law enforcement program. And so then, if you jump to 2025, February, hire a law enforcement instructor, and then have that class and program ready to roll in August of 2025. That's kind of a lot of information. I didn't know if there was anything that you guys, any questions that you guys might have about any of this? I'd be more than happy to answer those.
It'd be a newer program. You see any problems for like the director role and anything like that?
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I'm not afraid of work, so. I, I, I'm going to add as many programs as you guys will let me add, so. Not right now, maybe I'll come back to you here in a couple of years, but we'll see. I know this might be it for me. I don't know, we'll see. No, I, no, I mean, I appreciate you asking that, but, I mean, I, for me, again, this is, the whole reason why I took the job is I wanted to make it a, you know, double the size of it, so hopefully, we're slowly getting there. So right now, it's been busy and hectic, but I enjoy the work, so it's been awesome.
So then, students in the physical therapy program, would they begin until August of 2024?
That's correct.
And then the following, 2025 would be law enforcement?
Correct. Yep, yep.
In construction on those facilities for that, when would those?
So ideally, we'd like to get that started here in the spring. But as you, like, I mean, it's just going to take a little while, so I guess kind of like the timeline for that would be, get that performance center started and come of like the timeline for that would be, get that performance center started and completed, and then once that's done, get those two, that, the old weight room renovated for the two classrooms. And the good thing is, like, I know whoever takes the highest, you know, whoever, you know, we're lucky enough to get for our high school position, we can, we can, if we need to for a semester, we can be flexible about where we put different programs. So, the good thing is we have, we're all centrally located right there, so if we need to move some things around, we can make that happen.
And then the whole certification?
Yeah.
Plus the college credit, what sort of certification would the physical therapy students actually receive?
So, for physical therapy, they can get, there's a couple different OSHA TENS that they can get. One is healthcare, they can also do CPR certification, and then they can also, I've, I've been in contact with UCM, and they'll do, right now, what they're offering is, or suggested is their six hours of kinesiology that kids can use that towards also. That's, I'm still, like I said, I'm still working with different universities about where, what we can offer, what we can get, like, multiple credit more than just six hours, so...
And law enforcement, what would that imply?
Yeah. So, law enforcement, same thing. They can do, they can get an IRC, the Missouri Peace Officers Association, they can do an IRC through them, and then there's multiple universities that they can get college credit through. So, I think that actually one, you can get up to 12 hours in a lot of them. Yeah. And then, yeah, and then when they're, when they're done with the law enforcement program, the goal is that if they want to, they can go work corrections, and they can go work dispatch to get started.
Because you've got to be 21 to be law enforcement officer, but this will rotate them in, right into security and that type of operations.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ruby?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. So, we need to vote to approve the grants.
Still not.
First by Darren.
Second.
Second by Jill. Any further questions, comments? Hearing done. All those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of the 22-2023 Health Services Program Evaluation. Dr. Cruz.
Okay. I know this is a little unique to approve a program evaluation in, in our open discussion like this, but I wanted to take a few minutes to just talk a little bit about our health services program because we do these every two years. And if you think back to 2020 at this time, life was a lot different for our health services program, and so we have added some things as a result of that. One of them is, if you've got, maybe the one before?
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. As he's pulling that up, one, one goal that we really had started to implement before COVID came along is, you know, partnering with Lex Luray in Lexington and also with Missouri Western to get students in here to do their capstone programs with our school nurses. We had started that program, and that kind of, you know, went, by the way, aside for a little bit. And so, that's really been an effort that, that Laney, our district nurse, has been working on here currently to really build that partnership back up. So, that's one of our goal, our new goals in the evaluation. And another one, which is no surprise, is really building that partnership with our Clay County Health Department. Of course, we were kind of forced into that, and not, you know, that was, you know, a very normal part of day-to-day life back in 2020, but we really, you know, found some benefits to that partnership and, and want to continue that partnership. And, and so Laney does meet with them regularly, and she has the opportunity that, then to, you know, take their guidelines and think about, you know, what our policies are toward our health services and how we might, you know, best follow those procedures and guidelines. So, those are two big things in the evaluation that I wanted to point out. But a couple of things that, that I would say about it is, you know, a big strength of our health services program really is our people. We are blessed with some really great individuals working in health services in our, in our school buildings. You know, you really have to have caring individuals in that role. They are very, very busy, and a lot of times, you know, I know that our personnel, you know, in our buildings do, are very grateful for those individuals working in those roles, but a lot of times, you know, they don't get, you know, the pats on the back that maybe they deserve, and just want to make note that that's one of the huge strengths here in the district, is we have really great people working in that role, and a phenomenal district nurse, you know, that really organizes the work that they do day-to-day and is always there to step in and sub when needed, because that brings me to one of the pieces that is kind of, you know, that we want to improve upon, is we don't have a lot of subs for that role. And, you know, we've worked with some things like, you know, making the, the, we used to have the pay kind of graduated for subs, like an RN would make a little bit more than someone with no certification, but we've changed that, so we've done some things there. We're also using that capstone program to get some of those students into that, that room, and eventually, you know, maybe turn them into some subs that we can have in there. So, Laney's working very hard to do that, and I just, you know, if you ever see any of those, you know, health room individuals out, definitely just, you know, give them a word of thanks because they work very hard. And then, a thing that is a big action item for us, of course, is our early childhood clinic, and just the excitement that's buzzing around that. I know it's going to start in the early childhood, but, you know, all of our nurses will eventually have access to that. So, that's a big thing that's, you know, what we're hoping, that when we come back in, you know, '24 and do another program evaluation, that we're talking a lot about that. So, I do need you all to approve that. So, my recommendation is that you please approve the health services program for 22-23.
So moved.
First by Caitlin, Rick at her, he has a second. It was a two-way tie first. Any questions for Dr. Cruz? It was Rick second, Caitlin first.
You said that, you know, obviously everybody works hard, is there anything you see that we can do to help them anymore?
Caitlin first, Rick second.
I think just...
Freely throw them anymore down a ladder, I mean...
I could think of a lot of things, maybe.
Right.
No, but they, they are a great group, and, you know, I know that they love the work that they do and, you know, are grateful for the, the work that they're able to do, but I think just any appreciation that we can give them would go a long way.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Thank you, ma'am. And you're still up for the...
Yes, I'm still up. And this really is just a quick update. I mentioned the clinic, and we're excited because things are happening, even though it feels, has maybe felt a little bit quiet since we, you know, had our, our little time out there in front of the Early Childhood Center when we were, you know, given the money from T-Mobile. But if you'll scroll down to the next one, there, there is a fit test that has recently happened. However, you know, as soon as I, it wasn't long after I'd given it to Lisa to put in here that, you know, there's already been some changes. And, but it's about 90% complete, and I just thought you guys might want to look at it a little bit. And, and really, the plan here is, you know, after they get to completion on the fit test, they'll go ahead and put those bids out and get started on construction, and they're working on, Mark, remember, is where our funding is coming from, which is, is our Head Start partner. They're working on a memorandum of understanding with Swope, so really, all of that can just be funneled through the two of them, and we're reaping the benefits over here, so we don't have to worry about that piece. So, we're excited about that, that they've taken that off our plate. But just wanted to share what's happening so far with that fit test, and again, about 90% complete, and we hope to get to some construction soon.
That's a lot in a little area.
It's a lot, yes.
You'll look at it.
Yeah. You might have to take some time to look at it.
I know.
It is little people.
To start with.
To start, yeah, that's right.
Thank you for that update.
Absolutely.
Next up is Dr. Tomlinson, Open Enrollment Discussion.
If you take a look, there's been a proposed legislation in Jeff City about House Bill Number 253, and we've been asked by different organizations that we are members of, such as Mayor and MSBA, to take a look at the impacts that these legislative actions would have on local school districts, and I thought this was an important one to bring to your attention. What this bill would, in essence, do is begin the open enrollment process within Missouri. Some of the talking points we have, whether we want to support or not support this type of initiative, is, to our knowledge, there's no state or national studies or research that have shown that open enrollment improves student outcomes or achievement. Under open enrollment, there would be a loss of students from a district. They will leave the funds and resources to educate the remaining students. There'll be less money. So, if we have, let's say, 100 students decide that they would rather go to Lawson, that money goes with them and leaves less money for us to educate the rest of the students here. Public school districts will be pitted against one another to attract students. We would also be compelled to spend significant money, time, and effort to market to students in other districts to try to get our students from them. I mean, that's what open enrollment would bring about. My contention would be is I don't know that that's what's best for the students of Excelsior Springs. Members should be cognizant that if passed, House Bill 253, legislators will only attempt to further expand open enrollment, and I don't think that's the right path to go down, but that's, I wanted to bring this to your attention. It's up for your consideration, and there is the opportunity for you to pass a resolution, either in support or to fight these types of initiatives.
What are you hearing on the ground down there? Does it have a, does it have some traction? I mean, they've tried this so many times, in one way or another.
I think you're going to continue to see these types of initiatives, and they're, they're not going to stop, and they're going to keep continuing and trying to chip away at it until they get to where they want to be. And I think it's more important now than ever for local school districts to have a voice, at least in the conversation, and at least be able to say, here's how we feel at the local level. And I think legislators at least need to hear what that voice is and what your opinions are, and that's why I want to make sure we take these opportunities to at least gather how you feel about this.
Is this just a discussion or do they have a motion, or are you just... Advising us, or...
Yeah, adopt, we want to adopt the resolution, yeah. Or not adopt the resolution, it's whatever.
I would make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Thanks for bringing this to our attention. That's important, very important.
It's just, it's just a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Privatization, which is what they want. They want private schools to be able to get the money that, you know...
With having no accountability.
With no accountability.
No.
Don't have to take, kids they don't want to take, all that good stuff.
It's, it's no accountability for the money or for the education piece.
Well, and, and a family is going to have four or five school districts basically harassing them constantly, trying to recruit, which is exactly what it's going to be, their children, and, and the result is going to be, you know, and, and the districts that are already in trouble, it's like throwing an anvil to a drowning man. You know, we'll probably be fine, but there are districts around the state that may not be able to survive. A horrible idea.
Yeah, agreed.
All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor? That passes seven to zero. Last discussion item is entertaining an approval of changing our board meet, minute, our board meetings from Monday, the second Monday of every month, to the second Tuesday of every month.